To the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you remain standing for a moment, please? Unfortunately, last Wednesday, we lost a first grade student from the primary center in a tragic accident. Both she and her mother were killed over on Englishman Hill Road. So let's take a moment to honor the life of Maya Worley. Thank you. Let's move to the roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistock?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here.
Dr. Feig? Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Polakowski? Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here, and there are eight present and one absent. Citizen comments, are there some citizen's comments?
Yes, we have Fred Collins here this evening.
Mr. Collins, if you want to step to the microphone.
I'll make a present offer to Mr. Molnar, one month from the acting board president, please. My name is Fred Collins, and I'm a Southmoreland Elementary School president. I'm not very concerned about the Scotty Stadium and the schedule of the football games. Since I am limited in five minutes to address the board, I will state my concerns and ask all my questions at one time. Since you have no time limits, I will be happy to wait for you to provide the answers I have requested. Question one, what options were presented by the school, by the board, to the board for the location of the home games which cannot be played at our stadium? Please provide documents to the parties involved to testify and all the information available by which the decisions were made to move home games to Cal U. If you do not provide what I have requested in question number one tonight, I will expect all the information at the next public meeting on 10/10/13, both in writing and personal testimony. Question three, what insurance coveries do we have to repair and/or replace the artificial turf? Please provide the exact amounts of coverage costs, which is and is not covered, and how paint will be made. Will the SSD be responsible for any cost? If so, how much will that be? If you do not provide the answer to number three, please have representatives from insurance agency or agencies present in the October 10th meeting to give a full detailed information about the coverage or lack thereof. If costs must be borne by the SSD, how will we pay for that? Will the taxes be raised? The available fund balance at the end of the present school year is $675,000. If any of that is to be used, where will the funds for future expenses come from? These floods happened in August and now is October. Exactly what progress has been made besides hiring more people to study the problem? Where are all their reports? What has been the total cost of the Scotty Stadium prior to the flooding? Why was the field not placed on the hill, on the high, high on the hill at the previous location? Thank you.
Thank you very much. For your comments and for these questions, and we will take them under consideration. I think we've addressed quite a few of these in past meetings, and we'll take them under consideration for...
At this point, Levi, do we have any reports or written reports that we can provide the public? Or any written documentation, anything?
I'll be discussing that under the discussion, that's part of your agenda. And I'll be talking a little bit about what we know at this point.
Well, that's right. We have breast cream field there, so we'll be making some comments. Okay, thank you. Let us move to the minutes, the minutes of September 5 and September 12, please.
At next week's voting meeting, you will be asked to approve the minutes of the September 5 and September 12, 2013 meetings.
Questions, comments, go ahead, Ms. Feig.
I would like to thank you for making the change.
Yes, thank you.
I would like to know if we could amend it just a little bit more. Which, you said, what I'd like for it to say, which Dr. Feig believes was illegal. It says, "Dr. Feig left the meeting at 8:31 because she refused to participate in illegal board actions in which illegal actions by the superintendent were condemned by the board as obstruction." Which I would like for it to say, illegal board actions in which Dr. Feig feels is illegal.
Let's discuss it, Jesse.
No, because not all of us, not all of us, that's saying that they're illegal.
Please.
And I don't think...
Please, Jesse, can we discuss it?
Just a minute, let her, do you want to say something else?
But I just felt that, looking at that, that's making me think if a stranger would look at it, like, oh, the superintendent's being doing illegal actions, I think I should say in your opinion.
Okay, all right. Ms. Feig, you want to say a little more?
It's what he did, legal.
That's because we gave him directions to move around, do as needed.
He created a position.
I think it should stay just the way it is, because that's what she said. And what she said is the reason why, not what you speculate or what you think she believes or should have said. That's what she said, and that's what should be in the minutes, what she said. I wouldn't want you to change anything.
Because she said she refused.
She believes that.
Why don't we do this?
Anyway, I just thought, went the normal, two years from now coming in here, and it exactly looks like that.
Well, that is what happened. You know, it's a matter of opinion, yours and mine. I believe he violated the law.
And it should state that in your opinion.
Jesse, did he have the right to create a position that had been abolished by the board?
We gave him authority to...
No.
That's the same thing, Cap.
Please, answer my question.
Well, then, why did you vote right afterwards to change everything? To cover your butt is what you did, because Mr. Patani told you you should have that vote. Otherwise, you'd never had that vote, and you would have been illegal. I know, go ahead and snicker. Everything here is a snicker.
It's okay for you to ask for an amendment, that's all I ask.
Well, you can amend it to say what you want, not what she wants.
Ms. Kaufman, you may, why don't we leave it like this? And if you want to raise this as a point of order, since we've discussed it, we can vote on it next week to clarify. And so just bring it as a motion to attach, if you wish to take it from here. Okay, thank you. Treasures report, bills payable.
Yes, you'll also be asked next week to approve the treasures report and bills payable. Those documents will be sent to you as soon as they become available to us.
Comments, questions? Let's move to discussion. 2013 National Blue Ribbon School.
We recently found out in a teleconference by Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, that Southmoreland Elementary School is a 2013 National Blue Ribbon School of Merit. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the principal of that school. Pardon? Excellence.
Okay, Mr. Lee?
Excellence and merit. Mr. Lee?
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased and honored to announce that Southmoreland Elementary School has been named a 2013 National Blue Ribbon School by the United States Department of Education Secretary, Arnie Duncan. The announcement of the schools receiving this honor was held on Tuesday morning, September 24, at 9:00 a.m. in Washington, D.C. And we were one of 236 public schools in the United States to receive this special honor. And we were one of 14 schools in the state of Pennsylvania, 10 of which were public schools. I would like to first congratulate and thank all of our students, parents, board members, staff members, for their hard work in helping us achieve this honor, along with the application process. In November, Dr. Scott and I will have the opportunity to travel to Washington, D.C. to represent our school and accept our Blue Ribbon Award. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes schools where students perform at very high levels or where significant improvements are being made in student levels of academic achievement. And to be considered a school must be nominated by the top education official in the state. And the nomination of our school was submitted by former Pennsylvania Secretary of Education, Ron Tomalis. We were one of 13 public schools in the state nominated back in December to apply for a Blue Ribbon School status. The application process involves sharing achievement data for the past five years, along with questions in the area of curriculum, professional development, which includes our team meeting, teaming meetings, book and article discussions, section on engaging families and communities, where brings in our PTA, Arts and Music Night, our relationship with Scotto Bank and Trust, and sharing lessons learned. If you remember, SES was a school and school improvement back in 2008 and moved to high levels of achievement through the use of the professional learning communities model. There was also a section on school leadership, which also includes our team leaders and indicators of academic success, which includes our achievement data. Our application was submitted in April, and I received word of our selection, I actually received word of our selection the Thursday before the announcement. The Blue Ribbon School Department wanted to have five principals from honored schools to be online with Secretary Duncan through something called a Google Hangout, which I think is Google's version of Skype. And they had called me to be one of those five principals to be on there, and they were going to have each of us tell a little bit about our schools. Unfortunately, that process developed a glitch on the Washington, D.C. end, so they just had the secretary to do the announcement without the five principals. But I was not to release any information to the public until it was made official on September 24, after it was announced from Washington. I have a list, and I'm going to give the board a list of the schools in Pennsylvania that were chosen as 2013 Blue Ribbon Schools for this year. There were seven elementary schools, us being one, two middle schools, one high school, two Catholic schools, and three charter schools. The only school in Westmoreland or Fayette County was Laurel Point Elementary School in the Kisske Area School District, and us. So I have, we've got a banner made to put up our school. And if any of my staff would like to come up and unfurl that for me, I'd greatly appreciate it. Because it's a very great honor to be honored. I've been receiving emails from other schools, other colleagues, people that I know. I've been everywhere I go. I even had the marching band students congratulating me as we were going to competition last week. So it is a very great honor. We worked very hard for this, and we appreciate, you know, everybody's support with that. So this is one of the banners we're going to hang up in the school so that everybody knows that we're a National Blue Ribbon School. And Dr. Molnar, Dr. Scott, if you want to have anything to add to that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Let's give a hand here. Dr. Molnar, go ahead and say anything.
Yes.
Let me just mention this to the rest of the board. Outstanding. I'm going to give the board an opportunity to all respond to it too, then if you wish to say something, but go ahead, it's beautiful.
I just would like to offer my congratulations to John and your staff and everyone who was involved. It represents a great deal of hard work, a great deal of focused work, and a great deal of good leadership on the part of you, your team leaders, Dr. Scott, the whole group. So I congratulate you. I'm very proud to be a part of this district and a part of your achievement.
Thank you.
I would certainly like to add that, you know, we, at no point did we ever realize that the end result of this journey was going to be a National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, which is our nation's highest honor in public education. You know, we landed ourselves back in 2008 in school improvement because according to the federal government, we were substandard in our achievement levels, and we were. We had to stand in front of the board back in 2008 and talk about that, talk about where we were. We had to brutally and honestly confront our reality, which wasn't good. And we had already set a plan in motion to improve that. And having been a part with SES, one big team, I certainly know what has gone into this journey. And I couldn't be more proud of this honor if I were a teacher or a principal of the school myself. Probably the proudest I've ever been in my career. And I really want to thank, I'm not going to mention, try to mention the names of the application committee from your school, John, because I will leave somebody out. But Dan Clara, representing administration, all of your teachers that in the school, and then especially those that participated in the application process. Obviously, we were nominated from the state, and there was a very detailed application that went along with that, that took much time and effort. And what an amazing honor. And I congratulate you, and I congratulate your teachers, the staff. And really, the neat thing about it is, all across the district, we feel like we own your honor, your award, your success. We feel a part of it, and we're very proud of you, we're proud of the district.
And it is a team effort. I mean, the primary center, the basis where the students start, I mean, that builds the foundation that leads into our building and from our building on to the middle school and so forth. So it really is a true team effort all the way around. But, you know, we are certainly honored, and I'm very proud and very honored to be the principal of the school that is a National Blue Ribbon School. And I'm sure it'll sink in a little bit more in Washington in November to when we get the award presented to us officially.
Thank you very much. Just stay there. Maybe just the board members give you an opportunity to reflect a little bit, because it is a part of all of us, if you want to say something or something that triggers your memory of the elementary school. And I would mention one, or maybe two here. About four years ago, was the first that I sat around this table again, and I heard this term collaborative learning and collaborative education. And innocently, at one of the first meetings, said, "What is collaborative education?" And they, I think it was Dr. Scott, said, "We'll bring something at the next meeting." So at the next meeting, he and a team, they show up with visual. And what I remember is that picture, this was in an earlier life of Dr. Scott. He was a teamster, and there were six horses or six mules, and they were giving an honorable burial to veterans. And his note was, "It works better if they're all going in the same direction and if they're all pulling together as a team." And that image stayed with me of what collaborative learning is all about, and the team being together. And then maybe it was about a year later, because in part of this, we're not in the classroom tonight, they were invited at the Pennsylvania School Board Association in Hershey to give a presentation. And again, the team was there, Dr. Molnar, they were all there. And there must have been 30, 40 principals, staff leaders, and board members who were there wanting to know what this was about. And they made an outstanding presentation there. And I was really, the way in which they passed it along then, and we're leaders in our field, so just really grateful to be a part of it. So those are two things.
It was really wonderful at that presentation. I think we had five board members. Four of you guys came and supported us. I know Dr. Feig didn't attend our presentation, but we really enjoyed that opportunity to show across the state the journey that has led us to this great honor. So thank you.
Go ahead, you have something, Michael, you want to say?
As a parent, kind of, I have a daughter who went through, over my years ago, she's a senior now. So I saw that before the 2008, and then what it was, because my youngest daughter just went through the 2008 to now, so she'd been in the elementary school during this process. And just to see the change of how things work and how things are being done, it's just great to have your staff and your students agree.
I think part of the process of having all of the, of each grade level within the same school is certainly helpful, because the teachers are able to have that conversation daily if they need to, instead of dividing it, spread out over several buildings.
I've got a couple of comments down there. I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Lee, faculty, staff, parents, and students of SES, the very prestigious Blue Ribbon Award. To me, this award is proof of Southmoreland's courage, of Southmoreland's courage to think outside blocks, which I consider collaborative thinking at that time, and the goal to never stop raising the bar when I achieve. I'm extremely proud to be a part of the Southmoreland School District, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Good job. Because everything's been said. Working with you guys in the past years, and just, I know how hard you all work and everything. So it's really, it's, congratulations.
Thanks.
Over the years, we've been told that charter schools have not been doing well overall. There was only one that made AYP, is that right?
I believe I heard that somewhere.
They refer to cyber charters.
Cyber charter.
Who are these awards? Are they...
Public charters.
They're just charters. I didn't see any cyber charters in Pennsylvania. I just, those are just charters.
They're brick and mortar charters.
That's what I was wondering, how they could give them an award if they weren't doing well. I was wondering about that, because that makes more sense to me.
Thrill.
I'm just, like everyone else, extremely proud of you guys and doing a good job. Keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
Churning a mod.
We're trying.
Proud that my kids go there.
We actually had, I know I've shared this at our administrative meeting, we had, and I think this was even before we had the actual announcement of the Blue Ribbon, but we had a family that moved to our school from Florida. And they searched us out on the website. And they saw all the accolades that our district has received over the last several years. And they were actually a little concerned that their child was not going to be able to keep up with where we are with that. But I thought that was a kind of a compliment for us, because, you know, they looked and said, "Well, wow, this is where we're coming from, and this is where these folks are." And, but they came, and they're with us.
I'm just so proud of students, administration, everybody that's involved with this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
How long have you been doing ELC now?
Started in 2003 at Southmoreland Junior High School.
Thank you again.
Thank you, John. Gail spoke, she used the term raising the bar. And one of the books that we study faithfully is called Raising the Bar and Closing the Gap. And that's one of the things we try to do through our professional learning community model. And we attribute a lot of our success to the professional learning community model. And Southmoreland Primary Center was recently named a model professional learning community at work school. So Dan Clara, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for recognizing us. Southmoreland Primary Center was recently chosen as a national model of professional learning community at work by the organization that began professional learning communities, an organization that is connected to Richard and Becky DeForre, who are really the pioneers of collaborative teaming and working as a group for the betterment of student learning. And it's very difficult for the primary center to receive an accolade like that, because unlike everyone else, we don't have data that is collected like the other schools have, PSSA data, Forsite data. And so the application process for us is a little bit different in that we have to be able to show our growth in different ways. We can't necessarily look at norm tests that are given across the country. We use DIBELS data, which is a reading test that is given to us by the University of Oregon, a really trusted and well-used measurement for student reading. And we also talked to great length about our process of making sure that we work with kids where they are. We take them where they are, and we help to improve their learning by reorganizing and all the intervention and enrichment techniques that we have employed over the last five years. And so we're very proud of the fact that we are one of the few primary centers in the country that is recognized. We are the only one that I found on the site that is a K-1 website. Everybody else is K-1-2, which allows at least for some more comparative data. And I couldn't be more proud of my staff and the people I work with and the people on the stage who have been so supportive of us as well. It means a lot, and we continue to try to honor the mission of high-quality learning for all of our kids the best that we can. It's not always easy, and we always have questions, but we certainly continue to try to find the answers. And I thank you for recognizing us, Dr. Molnar, the board, thank you very much. It means a lot to my staff and to me.
Thank you, Dan. Dan, how many schools in Pennsylvania have been honored with this particular honor unit?
There are three, and they are all from Southmoreland. Southmoreland Middle School was recognized as a national model of professional learning community at work many years ago, actually. Recently, the elementary school was also recognized, and we were the last to be selected. I think they probably were tired of hearing from me and seeing so many applications. But I'm very proud of it for a K-1 building, which does not necessarily have the comparative data that others might have. For us to earn this honor is a real mark of distinction, and we have a lot to be proud of and a lot to be thankful for.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
And one more item that is not on your agenda. We talked to you a little bit, I believe it was last month, about a grant from the Monsanto Foundation. Dr. Scott, you have some things that you'd like to discuss?
Monsanto is a very large agricultural company. And back in the springtime, my secretary, Donnie Culp, brought to my attention a grant opportunity through Monsanto that we qualified for, for being a rural school district that was nominated by farmers from within our district. It had to be nominated from community farmers. It was very late in the grant application process when we found out about this. So I immediately called Mr. Croftcheck at the high school, and we discussed it. We tend to be pretty competitive people in the district, and when we talk about things, if we're going to do it, we want to be successful, we want to win. So I asked, in a phone conversation last spring, we only had a couple of weeks, I asked Dan if he could identify a couple of people. It was a science and technology opportunity. If he could identify a couple of people, that would be his go-to people. That could, obviously, bright people, competent people, people that can work under strict deadlines, and that would really be motivated to do this. He immediately knew who he wanted, he approached those people. I kind of stepped out of it at that point. Dan, the two teachers, and Donnie gave all the logistical support. And I really didn't hear much more about it again until recently, when we found out that we were one of four school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to receive a Monsanto grant, and the grant amount was for $10,000. And I would like some people to come up and be recognized and talk to you a little bit about what they did and what they're going to do with it. So I'd like to recognize Chris Pollard, if he's able to leave his post and come forward, our tech ed teacher from the high school, Lindsay DeCastello, science team leader, Donnie Culp, and Dan Croftcheck, if you guys would all step forward and tell us about your grant. Great job, guys.
Thanks, Dr. Scott. I will, just a small introduction, allow the experts to stand up and discuss more what they want to do. A very good, a very, very fine honor, testament of our relationship with the farming community here in Southmoreland School District. Very proud that we were able to represent them and be able to bring home this award to the school district as being one and four within the state of Pennsylvania. A very, very nice achievement. A lot of what we're looking to really become progressive in science education, integrating with that technology and engineering, as well as mathematics. And these individuals here, really the call of duty, stepped up, put this together. We will be recognizing the farm. We've invited the nominating farmers to a small reception that will be followed by the opening presentation by Monsanto that will present us with the award at the... at the senior night football game, which is next Friday, and the presentation ceremony will begin at 6:15. Everybody will get to see, present to the community this honor from them. So with that said, some specifics of the grant, and talk to these individuals here, step forward and talk about what we plan to do and what this entails.
First, I'd like to say that I think because of the awards that the school district has been receiving, that may have been a motivator to the farm families who nominated us for this grant. In late spring, we received a call explaining that we had been nominated and what our process was, and the brief timeline. Dr. Scott, Mr. Croftcheck, Ms. DeCastello, and Mr. Pollard, everyone got together and really pushed to make this happen. I did a lot of logistical data as far as school district information, student information, totals and tallies. We had a couple meetings that I was involved in where we were talking about what direction, and then Lindsay and Chris just took off with it and did a wonderful job. They can certainly better explain what their choices were and how the decision process went. Thank you.
So in our whirlwind of applying for this grant, Chris and I kind of sat down and thought about where we really wanted to take the direction of both our science department and our technology department, and knowing that this was a STEM-oriented grant, STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and incorporating all those together into one curriculum. We decided in our searching that a lot of STEM activities are available for free, so going out and purchasing kits or textbooks or things that, you know, were screaming STEM wasn't our best effort or our best spent money. So we decided to apply for the grant under the premise that the majority of the money would be spent on technology that the students would be able to use in order to work within the STEM curriculum, and we're already starting to incorporate some of those ideas into our classrooms right now. For example, things like simulations that the students might not have access to previously. I'm right now using an atom simulation, and I know, I think you've used maybe like bridge building simulations. So our goal with this, the majority of these funds is to purchase technology so that the kids all have consistent access to the STEM curriculum that we're going to build. We do have some funds allocated to some training, some planning time to make these big changes within our science curriculum and our technology education curriculum. But I also want to make sure that we recognize and thank our farmers, because the Vance family and the Catalina family were the two families that recommended us, and I think that, without them, we would have not been able to apply, this would not have been an option for us, and we probably would have never known about it. So they recommended Southmoreland School District, and then we jumped on the opportunity, and we're better off now. So we're, I'm very excited that we've had the opportunity, and I want to extend that thank you. And I hope, I want to make sure you all know that you're also invited to the ceremony. Hopefully, you've received your invitations in the mail. No? Okay.
We'll get them.
Okay, hopefully.
I'm much more comfortable behind that camera than in front of this one, so I will be brief. I think that Lindsay and I recognize that there's a need for STEM, and STEM's kind of an educational buzzword for technology, where the practical applications of mathematics and science to be utilized. So I think that we're going to get a very good opportunity to use science and mathematics to produce a product, to find that solution, to put hands-on learning to a great number of students, and I think this grant will go a long way to helping us do that. So again, thank you to the farmers, and I worked with a great team. We did have a short deadline, and I hope that we got it, we got it all wrapped together, and it turned out well. So I thank you, and my team, and our farmers, and...
All right. Cheers for the...
Thank you.
..............................
Warranties or something like that?
Right.
And then you said after that that you and Mr. Potonic had spent a week preparing these specifications for this.
At the onset of the disaster, the belief was that it could be repaired and made playable for at least part of this season. And as the weeks went by and insurance people came in and out, they told us subsequently that they were not interested in funding and repair because of liability, which was not our original understanding. We were trying to move on this as quickly as we could and as safely as we could.
Did that pamphlet or did that brochure that those specifications, did that cost us anything to develop?
I don't have a copy of Mr. Potonic's bill, so I don't know the answer to that question.
It will, yes.
Did we hear anything from the railroad and their findings?
Railroad is willing to work with us. They are willing to put a diversion in. We need to get permission from the landowner so that they can be granted adhesion to dig on the landowner's property. So that's where we are in that.
None of that's been done yet to repair?
No, because we're trying to determine exactly who the landowner is.
And then well, suspension of all of those.
Right, they were working on some piping upstream.
So nothing could be repaired anyway until you find out exactly what's going on?
We were reluctant to do anything and have another flood, yes.
Remind us again why we chose or how we chose California to be our home field?
Yeah, Mr. Swink and Mr. Krawcheck and Mrs. Santamont and Dr. Scott worked very diligently on that. The first week, we looked at other schools in the county, and the only available field was our opponent. And we obviously would have preferred to not give our opponent a home field advantage. And we also were looking, and Tim, you can jump in here because you were part of this discussion, we were looking to have a field that our kids could call their home field for the year. So the band would know where they were to go, the athletes would be familiar with the locker rooms, the officials would know where to go. Tim, jump in here, some of the other considerations.
We looked into fields all over the region, and obviously one of the problems that you run into, believe it or not, universities a little bit easier to deal with because usually you can reach one person in the athletic department that can give you that permission. When you're dealing with other schools and talking to the athletic director, they say, well, you know, it's available that date, but now you have to go to the board and you have to wait for board meetings. And we couldn't, we didn't want to get stuck in a situation where we're holding out a field and then find out that we're not going to get it. And on top of that, there was not one location, we would have had to have played all of our games at a different field every time. And with football, with having the band, with having homecoming, with having senior night, from the early on, we made the decision that we want to try to keep the experience as professional and normal. Just because the kids lost their field doesn't mean they have to lose a nice homecoming experience. So when you have to take all of your homecoming stuff out there, when you're doing your all-academic teams, senior night, all of these things, once we get to know the venue as an administration, now we know how to queue everybody up, we know how to run the operation, and it becomes kind of like our home field for that year instead of trying every time out, sending an advance crew to try to get things figured out. We also found early on that the insurance company would cover any losses that we had from having to rent another field. And that also aided our decision to be able to move ahead with Cal. It's, you know, the best situation is to be able to use your own field. But, you know, I've been out to the home games with the rest of the administrative team, and it's been a professional, been professionally run each time, really no complaints. We do the best we can. Yes, it is 35 minutes from here. And yeah, you do, if you don't have EZ Pass, you're going to wait on the toll for a long time. But we try to make the best of an unfortunate situation, and I really applaud the folks that I work with for really going above and beyond to make sure that it is. And then the neat thing that we hear from the football side of it, again, trying to put a positive spin on it, these kids are getting a college experience every time out. And that's been kind of neat for them if you can't play on your own field. It'd be a shame to have to, nothing again, we have a good relationship with the Genet administration, but it would have been a shame to have our opening home game to go and play on Genet's field. That's, you know, we didn't want to do that to our own kids. So we looked for neutral sites and just didn't really find any. And again, it would have had to have been a different one each time out.
Someone from the community asked me, have you tried the universities or colleges, whatever, in Greensburg, like, Seaton Hill and that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Charlie even physically went out there. And we even tried that for the other sports also. Absolutely, because early on, Mr. Benz, like we said, we found out that it was really, just the way universities are structured as schools, it was easier to get those permissions if we could find an appropriate site.
To answer your question about Seaton Hill, their football games are actually played at Offutt Field, which is Greensburg Salem's home field.
Yeah, but they did have soccer location. That almost worked out for us, but ultimately was not available. So we really did try. And again, I give a lot of, I mean, Charlie really hustled to find venues. And worked with the coaches and just trying to see what, trying to make it as good as a situation as it could be.
And especially in terms of soccer, a lot of our neighboring districts have stepped up. We've used a lot of their fields. The A.D.s have been great. Superintendents have reached out to me as well in terms of, you know, getting us on to a local field. So that's been very nice. I think a former colleague of mine once said, you know, we can hate each other Friday nights, but the rest of the week, we're going to hold hands and get along and do what we have to do to help each other out. And that's exactly what we've seen happen, you know, throughout this event.
Is there any consideration given cutting buildings on Saturday?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because you could have had a local field, the same field every time on Saturday, right?
The band has competitions on Saturdays, so they could do that if you had to match the band there.
Again, absolutely, and a lot of, that was an issue. And also, from early on, we really talked about trying to provide that sport with the same type of experience they would have had. And we talk, we pull the coaches in, we talk to them, you know, what do you think? Well, Saturdays, now you're getting out of your normal work routine. And, you know, if you're a coach, you like to have your structure, your routine, and Saturday, was it talked about? Absolutely was.
There are many schools that didn't have lights in the past. I don't know what it's like, what it is now. When they didn't have lights, they were scheduled on Saturdays.
That's correct.
It's a common thing.
Very uncommon today, but yes.
But my point was, if you had a local field that you could use every single time on Saturday, was that considered?
Were your JV games on Saturday?
Sure, yeah, sometimes they are, yeah. And in terms of, in terms of cost, you know, a neighboring district did provide us with a cost estimate. The stadium was $100 an hour. We use it for five hours, that was $500. The lights were $400 an hour, that's $2,000. Locker room facilities were $50 an hour, so that's $250. So there's $2,750. And in addition to that, additional costs to be determined by the school district, custodial needs, security, lighting crew, all of those things would have been on top of that, $2,750. At California, we have the whole package for $31.65, which I don't think we could have rented at least this particular school's venue for $31.65 by the time the, you know, the additional costs were added in. So it was, you know, a cost standpoint was something we looked at as well.
So we don't pay for security and custodians and stuff for our earnings here? That's additional, you said that was additional. We're already paying it, right, here?
No.
Well, at California, it was included in the cost. I'm comparing that venue to another district's venue.
Yeah, but you said the $2,700, maybe you said on top of that, you'd have to pay that.
Yeah.
We already do pay them, right? They're not free. So we pay them here and there.
No, we would have had to pay the extra at that.
Another school district for their custodians, their security people.
Well, it's the same as what we do here. I mean, we pay them here, we pay them. We don't get free security here.
Correct.
So whether we pay it here or pay it there, it's the same thing.
Exactly, but it costs less to pay at a California than it would have at another public school venue is my point.
Okay, unless somebody else has something else to say or comment, let's move on to WCIDC.
I'd like to ask a question.
Are you sure it's not a rhetorical question? Do you want to make a statement?
I'd like to know what our insurance coverage is.
Million dollars per event with a $25,000 deductible.
Okay, what are we going to get, though? How much are we going to get?
How much are we going, we're going to get a new field, whatever that is.
Pay $25,000.
Okay, so we have 100% coverage on everything?
We have a $25,000 deductible.
And everything above that is 100%.
Unless there's things that we add on that were part of the original.
Yeah, the term I think they use is betterment. They will not pay for betterment, but they will pay for replacement. Jim, is that your understanding? Jim has been in many discussions with our insurance broker, the insurance companies, and that's what we're told.
There was a, everybody gets that magazine that, I think it's the American School, you probably all read it, but on page 34, it's called Turf Wars, and it's what you're supposed to do when you buy an artificial turf for a school. It talks about the legal, some of the legal concerns that you have about that. And I thought it was a really good article. Like I said, you all get the magazine, you've probably seen it. I thought it was well done.
Thank you for noting it.
We'll make sure and look at that, thank you.
Let's move on to WCIDC, please.
Yeah, as you know, the Westmoreland County Industrial Development Corporation was here at the last meeting, talking about a KOEZ for a project that was going to go into the former American Video Glass Project. There was a lot of back and forth between the solicitors from the four taxing bodies that were involved, and some issues could not be resolved with the owner of the project. So their request for a KOEZ has been withdrawn at this time, so that will not require any action on your part.
Okay.
And the last item I have under discussion, quite a while back, you approved a stormwater project for the Jacobs Creek watershed to go behind the middle school. I'm pleased to tell you that that project has finally been completed. There's vegetation planted, there's a fence around it. The signage, I believe, is going up next week. So I would invite you, when you have an opportunity, to stop and check in with Mr. Mashin and go out and take a look at that project.
I forgot, who maintains that? Them, they maintain that?
I think we mow it, but other than that, that's about all the maintenance there is to it.
There's no maintenance at all?
No.
We will check it out. Moving to old business, three policies here.
Yeah, these three policies were actually discussed back in April. They were to have been voted on in the June meeting. That was the meeting, I was out of town, and when I built the agenda, for whatever reason, they didn't get on there. And Peggy pointed out to me that we had not adopted those three policies. So we will ask you to adopt the revision to policy 001, which is name and classification. The revision there was, we changed the address of the district from 609 Parker Avenue to 200 Scotty Way. Policy 217, graduation requirements, Mr. Krawcheck discussed that with you at length back when the policy was posted, and I did put a copy of that in your packet to refresh your memories. I believe the corrections were in red. And policy 828, which is a fraud policy. It's how to prevent fraud, not how to make it happen, by the way. But that's a new policy. We do not currently have a policy 828, so we would ask you to adopt that policy as well.
Do you want to comment? The copies that are in here, those are for our books.
Right, yeah, you receive copies of policies, starting with one, what is that one? 123.1, and they have blue separators between them. In your board, this is just board book maintenance. So in your policy manual, you'll take out the old 123.1, replace it with this one. These are the policies that have been adopted over the last, what, year, Peggy? And just, you know, replace the old policies with the new in your board book. So those are not, those have already been adopted.
Let's move to new business and the audit.
Right, Peggy passed out, I believe, I believe he put those through desks, right? Copies of the auditor general's report on the Southmoreland School District. There was one finding, and that finding was the fact that we did not have a memorandum of understanding with the local police department in a timely manner. We discussed that back when the problem was occurring. I told you the steps that we were taking to correct that, and we did indeed get it corrected before the auditor left. However, it was still listed as a finding. Other than that, we had a clean audit, so we're pleased to report that. Also, under audit, our current internal auditor, our single auditor, Mr. Stiber, his three-year agreement is up, and I received his proposal recently. And his proposal is, Peggy, did you hand these out?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good. For fiscal year 1213, his base fee is $10,625, and some additional accounting areas that we're asking him to do to help us get the AFR completed in a correct and timely manner. For 2012-13, it would be $12,625. For the 1314 audit, it would be $13,00140. And for the 1415 audit, it would be $13,675. We did a little bit of comparative shopping. I asked Peggy to check with some neighboring school districts, and without going into who the school districts are, one neighboring school district pays $16,000 for their audit, another pays $20,300, and another one was approximately $26,000 for an audit. So I believe it's administration's recommendation that at the voting meeting, we retain Mr. Stiber at the cost that he proposed. And Mr. Marnell, do you have anything to add to that? I know you and Mr. Stiber were in some discussions about what he can and can't do.
Right. And his proposed rates are incredibly reasonable compared to the fees that I have seen in my career, so I would recommend also retaining him.
Okay.
These other schools, which you go, and they have the same sign, the same.
Similar, yeah.
They're paying $20,000, $22,000. They're $1,900.
Why don't they hire this guy? Why don't they hire this guy if he's such a deal?
That's an excellent question, Mr. All. I would pose that to you, my superintendents.
Could this go after bid?
No, it's a service that's not required to be bid.
Let me just ask you this, Mr. Marnell. Do you think it's in the best interest of any group to continue to use the same person over and over and over and over again, whereas a fresh set of eyes may find some problems or ways to save us money or whatever the auditor may do?
There's no correct answer to that. It would depend on.
People get complacent, and, you know, that's usually when things happen, when people get complacent. You know, you walk in the door, you say, I've seen this all 20 times before, give me my check, I'm done.
Being a former CPA and an internal auditor, I have great amount of respect and admiration for professionals in that field. And it's their professional training, their professional skepticism, if you will, that I think 99.9% of them do not allow themselves to become complacent or, let's say, lazy in their duties in performing an important service like this. Yes, we've all heard and seen on the news and read over past years of big frauds that took place. Enron was a major one that fostered changes in Congress in passing new laws. But I, from my perspective, I think that CPA and auditor who gets to know you can perform audits more efficiently than a new firm that has to come in and establish itself, get the notes personnel. There's no right answer to that.
Is the audit that's completed by the auditor general's office, is that an audit of the internal audit, so to speak?
The auditor general does look at internal controls. I've sat with them many times over the years, and they go through an internal control questionnaire. They try not to duplicate the work of your hired auditor. They look more specifically at compliance with a number of important state requirements, you know, teacher certifications, receiving and use of state dollars. But they do look at the control systems that go into how you manage and utilize those state funds. So there is some crossover there. I think it would be nice if somewhere down the road, the state perhaps came up with a better process, because taxpayers were paying for a state auditing agency, plus as taxpayers, you're paying for a local auditing firm too. So, yeah, there is some crossover there. They try to not step on each other's toes, try to get as broad a look at the organization as possible.
Is it right that they do this audit once every year at the end of the year? Is that right?
Your local auditor does the audit every year. State auditors, usually on a cycle of every two years, they'll come out.
Okay, so we had a former business manager, and it went from one year, then it crossed over into a second year. Okay, you're talking calendar years or not?
Your local auditor audits your fiscal year. So in this case, Mr. Stiber would come in and be auditing the 2012-13 fiscal year.
Okay, when I read his report a few months ago, I was absolutely appalled. We had to do something like 352 budgetary transfers because the money was coming in and out of the wrong funds in the wrong amounts, and he never noted that. It was never noted in his audit. And I was wondering, what do they look at? He missed 352 mistakes. And they were mistakes, and that's all they were. And nobody got any money, I mean, nobody stole anything, but it was 300, I think it was 352 budgetary transfers. Some of them were as low as a dollar, and some of them were 18,000, 30,000, 40,000, 60,000.
The school code permits you to transfer dollars between budgetary accounts.
I know that, but it wasn't done. And what I'm saying is, 352, Jack, that's the only thing they thought, 352. I could understand 25, 50, maybe 75, but you get 352 where no money was being, checks were being written on the wrong accounts and all that, and that was never mentioned in this, you know, y'all got caught with this on a audit, it was never mentioned. And it just surprised me that you would not want to think long and hard about getting information that could be more valuable to the operations of the school.
Do we have any, in the years that he's served, has there been any, anything that has turned up that the state auditors or the review has turned up that he's not done his job?
Not to my knowledge.
Too well.
Oh, one thing with CPAs that perform audits, they all have to be what's called peer reviewed every so many years. And what that means is, there are certain select CPA firms that go out and review, peer review, other CPA firms that perform the auditing function. And they'll go through and they will sample, test a certain number of audits that have been done. For example, Mr. Stiber has to have a peer review, as any CPA performs the audit work. So out there, the profession is also policing itself and making sure that your hired auditor, another district's hired auditor, is following the parameters of the profession, what they should be doing, what they should be looking at, and making sure that, you know, they are documenting their work properly.
We're only one of his customers. Do you know if they ever looked at the Southmoreland School District?
Yeah, his, yeah, Southmoreland has been peer reviewed on a number of occasions, yes.
Let's do this, let's give this staff here a little bit of counsel. We have the recommendation, we've had the discussion here. Any, just looking at this side of the table, any comments here of how you'd like to see this go?
I'm hearing it says administrative procedures, and he also has compounded funds. Does that include the retirement funds and all that, there was a question on that?
Yeah, where are you looking, Jim?
On the back of this front page.
Okay, that's the state audit.
Right. They audit, the state audit's saying that they also found, they compounded information that everything was good with every contract, grants, administrative procedures, except as one detail noted. That administrative procedures, did that include the retirement funds that we're okay with that? Did they audit the work?
Yes, they did. We had to provide them with a significant amount of information in that regard.
So we've been cleared of anything suspicious?
According to the state, yes.
Could you pretend one of the states that the state's in there who's been auditing the time?
I just wanted, I wanted to ask.
Let's, let me give it an opportunity here. Go ahead, anything else? Are you, let's give the administration some sense of where we are. Are you ready to affirm the move ahead on this? Okay, I see nodding heads. Any other comments over here?
Yeah, I do have one quick one. Josie mentioned, you know, that cleared, I wonder if Greensburg Salem had been cleared by the state and their local auditor before they found the discrepancy in their pensions? You know, that might be something to look at, too, to say that these people do an audit, sometimes miss a lot of these things.
Well, Mr. All, I don't know what happened in Greensburg Salem, but I can tell you that the pensions that have been questioned on numerous occasions, the auditors asked for specific documentation with respect to those individuals, and we provided it to them. So I don't know what they did at Greensburg Salem, but I know that we gave them, you know, piles of information.
I understand that. And do we have, ever have anything specifically come back to say that the method that was used was proper, in writing, other than the letter that our former business manager got saying he didn't do anything wrong?
Well, we have an audit that has no findings in it, so that would indicate to me that there was no finding in everywhere.
And again, I bring up my question. Greensburg Salem probably passed several audits before they went and found those discrepancies, so I don't put a lot of faith in what you're saying.
Okay, understood.
But that's okay, thank you.
I'm in favor of it.
No, I do have one question. When the state comes in to audit, what years are they auditing? For example, when they come in this year, what years will they be auditing?
Let's take a look and see what years they ended with. They covered the 2009, 10, 2008, 2009. So the next time they come in, if I'm reading this correctly, they'll review 10, 11, and 11, 12, the school years.
Now, it says audit, our audit covered the period August 30, 2010, through March 19, 2013, except as otherwise indicated in the report.
Okay. I wasn't here, but that might be the time period they were out here on site. Sometimes they'll camp out a long time, make sure they cover everything they need to.
I understand that they're three years behind when they audit.
They may audit three years behind, but they asked specifically for updated information on the pension question. You're right, auditors cannot cover every single transaction that takes place in the organization, because there are thousands of transactions that take place. So, you know, they will look at the areas that, in their professional opinion, are areas that lend themselves to the potential problems, but they can't look at all of it. If there's an area that you would like your auditor to look at, you can certainly sit down with your auditor, because after all, you have hired them. You can make a recommendation to retain them, but you have hired them. You have the right to certainly sit down with them and say, you know, we'd like you, besides your normal scope of doing it, we'd like you to look at this in particular.
The auditor last time said that they are so understaffed and so overworked at the state level.
The state auditors, yeah.
That they used to look at like this many places, he said now it's like this many. So they're just doing three or four areas where they need to be 15 or 20, they used to look at whole lots of student enrollment. to look at whole lots of student enrollment. He said there were a huge number of things. And he said now they're so busy, they just do a small portion of it.
I'll give you an anecdotal story, if that's the right word. Dr. Mull and I were discussing this, going back on my experience. In 93, I was asked to go out and get quotes for auditing services. And it was because our current auditing firm was asking for an increase in their fee. And so we went out and I did an RFP and we got responses. Our current auditing firm at that time was upset that we did that, so he did not put in a proposal. And we ended up paying nearly 30% more in fee with the firm that was then selected to do the next three-year auditing period. So sometimes that can happen too. You go out because you're worried about the fees too high and you end up paying more.
Very good. We'll bring, we'll bring that as a recommendation next week. And let's go to New Directions.
Yeah, New Directions is a subsidiary of Chestnut Ridge Counseling. They offer behavioral health treatment for children and adolescents with behavioral health problems and difficulties with academic performance occasionally. We do find a need to send a student to New Directions. And consequently, every year, we renew our contract with them. So we would ask that you approve that contract at the voting meeting.
Hearing no comments. Let's move to the intermediate unit, Joint Purchasing Consortium.
Right. Every year, we are asked to name a representative and an alternate to the Joint Purchasing Consortium for supplies and fuel. We would recommend that Jim Mornell be appointed as our, as our delegate or a representative and that Lee Mizwa be appointed as his alternate. And along those lines, then we will ask you to entertain a motion to grant permission to the West Moreland Intermediate Joint Purchasing Consortium to advertise for multipurpose paper, unleaded gasoline, and diesel fuel.
Very good. Let's move to revision of policy 805. They want to just take those in what, in the order that's appropriate there.
Right. Yeah, we're just going to get down.
The four policies.
Yeah, get down, get down through these. Revision of policy 805, emergency preparedness. These need to be revised to bring us into compliance with some of the recent Safe Schools legislation that has been passed. So we had a policy 805, and that was emergency evacuation of schools. And now that policy needs to be broadened to include emergency preparedness. And the new policy calls for the administration to develop a comprehensive disaster response and emergency preparedness plan, which we have done. It requires us to use the resources of the Department of Health and Department of Ed, which we do. Evacuation drills, both in buses and in schools, which we do. Talking with parent staff, community agencies, first responders in developing the plan. We do work with the parents. We work with the local police departments. We had an individual here from the County Emergency Management Agency and spoke with our team. So we're doing all of these things that are new in the plan. However, we don't have a policy that actually reflects our practice. So we would ask that you post that policy at the next meeting. That's 805. 805.1, that has to do with relationships with law enforcement agencies. This policy has not existed before. The only thing in our policy manual that dealt with law enforcement and relations of law enforcement was called Students and the Police. And it described the procedure that was to happen in the event a student had to be arrested or spoken to by the police during school time. So this is a three-page policy that just outlines the things that we need to do in terms of maintaining relationships with both the local police force and the state police force. So that's 805.1. And then policy 849 addresses the fact that we are required every two years to have a memorandum of understanding with the local police department. That was actually what our audit citation dealt with. And one of the recommendations was that we have a policy stating that we indeed believe this is something we should be doing. So we'll ask you to adopt that or post that policy as well. And finally, policy 909, we need to revise that. And again, this is part of the Safe Schools legislation. Previous policy 909 was rather short. This adds a little bit to it. It expands the fact that we have no statutory relationship to other governmental bodies, but suggests that we do whatever we can to cooperate with them, with the exception of budgetary interference with their budgets or with our budgets, except as prescribed by law. It talks again about that memorandum of understanding, which was not in the previous policy. It talks about maintaining face time with the local municipality. And we've certainly been able to do that, both with East Huntington and Scottsdale Borough of late. Haven't done a lot with Everson yet, but we would like to invite them to the next meeting we have with Scottdale. And then it also talks about permission to, if we choose on an annual basis, to provide financial support to the local library. We've done that in the past, and we may or may not choose to do it in the future, but at least it would be in policy that that's an option that the board would have. So those are the policies that we're going to ask you to post on the 10th.
Just a comment on this governmental relations and with the meeting with the local law enforcement. Mr. Polinkowski was a part of that in the past six months, the meeting with them. Was somebody else from our?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Benz, yes. Okay.
Which was her too.
And Mr. Weissel.
And Mr. Beistock was there as well.
So, okay, good.
And myself.
For doing this even before we had a policy, but, yeah. Questions, questions or comments? Go ahead.
At that meeting, Dr. Mull, or it was discussed about duplicate services where we need to like cut down on that, that people available for other places. I noticed at the bottom of the SES driveway, middle school driveway, that we still have a school police in a crossing guard. Is that, have you looked into or?
We have, we did discuss that. You're absolutely right. I've reached out to the Borough on a couple of occasions to try to get another meeting date set up. And we've not been able to get a response from them. I think they're pretty busy with whatever, you know, their business they're conducting. But I have reached out to them on a couple of occasions via email. So my next move is to maybe put in a call and see if we can get a meeting scheduled. Because you're absolutely right, that's such a duplicated service.
Anything else?
Just on the emergency preparedness 805, Donna, toward the end, district staff will be trained to assist in implementing. Is that going to be like yearly, or who are they trained by? Or should that be in there? Are they trained?
Yeah, there are a number of ways we do that. On one of the recent in-service days, we actually did go through our preparedness plan with the staff. You know, we talked about what to do in the case of, you know, certain situations that may occur. And we also offer some CPR training, things of that nature. So, yeah, that does occur on a regular basis.
Very, very good. So we're bringing these next week to post. We'll vote on them to post, and then we'd have two months.
Well, 30 days.
30 days.
Depending on how the meetings fall.
Okay, very good.
And that, Mr. President, is all I have for public consumption this evening.
Okay. Board member? Let's take the citizen comments. Any, any, no further citizen comments here?
I have none.
Any, okay, Ms. Feig, go ahead.
Is it okay, I talk about our educational program here. Is that okay? This is what I'd like to discuss. Obviously, my days are numbered here, but I'm, I have a great concern about what's going on. Can I talk about it?
Sure. Just make, make a few comments, what you have to say.
No, it's not a few comments, no.
Well, we'll see.
Since I've been on the board, this four years ago, I was thinking about this at home. The South Moreland School District has spent $112 million in taxpayer money. And my big concern, I got to thinking about it, and I thought, what did we get for $112 million in the last four years? And I understand you're all very proud of your awards, and I congratulate you, and I'm, you know, pat yourself on the back. But I have a great concern about the difference between an award and a report card. And you probably read that the school, the state of Pennsylvania is now going to issue a school performance index or something like that. They're going to measure attendance, participation in testing, graduation rates, test scores, and year-to-year student progress. So somebody had told me that this had already been done. And, don't let fall. And somebody had told me about this two years ago, last year, I guess it was. And everybody was so busy getting their awards, and, you know, I didn't say anything. I didn't say anything. But, you know, I'm not going to be here, so I want to, I want to say the denial is nine in river in Egypt. I'm handing out a document to you that comes from a source called KenKen. And I looked them up, and they are an organization in Pennsylvania whose sole purpose is to research schools and to rate them according to quality. They use multiple data, not just one set of test scores. They in fact use student performance, subgroup performance, graduation rates. And in the earlier years, they use progress from one year to the next. This is boring you? You can see that the high school has a D, is a D+, our high school is at a D+ level. And the second page shows you that out of about 500 high schools, we have a 65.5 in number 315. I didn't copy all 315. That's the page out of there. But it shows that if you look at subgroup performance at South Moreland, and it's my understanding that that was the basis of these awards that we've been getting, the subgroups, like our special ed kids do this, or our poor, our kids who have the poverty level do this, Freeman do, I'm sorry, we'll get back to that. I want to talk about that a little bit. Then we get to the middle school that is an award-winning school. And the rate on that, the rating on that school is a B+. So I guess a B+ is okay to get an award. That's fine. But I want you to look on page four, where it says performance gains. And they're very good. You look, this says the average one-year change among this cohort between grades. And you can see that in our middle school, the performance gains are very, very good compared to the state of Pennsylvania. Now let's look at the, on page five. And this is, this is our blue ribbon school. And again, I congratulate you. I hope you get many blue ribbons. This really, really worried me. If you look at the performance gains at the elementary level, they have them plotted as a negative, negative. We, the whole state of Pennsylvania isn't doing well, but neither are these kids. And they're looking at kids third, fourth, fourth, fifth, sixth, those kinds of grades. That bothered me a lot, that our performance gains are problematic. Overall, the school does get a B+ in its total rating, is a, well, B, B+ whatever, which is very good. But the last page I wanted to, wanted to talk about. And there was this thing called No Child Left Behind. And what happened is all these states, all these states said to the federal government, if you give us your money, we'll go with Common Core. So the federal government said, we'll give you money, you go with Common Core. That's good. Well, we'll pay for that in the long run, but I'm not going to worry about that. But we were originally looking at the change in the teacher evaluation system. And ours cannot go into effect, I understand, because our contract doesn't say it can. So they're, they're doing that. But it says that under the new system, the teachers will supervise small subgroups delineated by skill level, instead of race, economic disadvantage, English language skills, or special education status. When they took this waiver, the state leaders pledged to improve student performance by 50% in the next six years. So this school performance profile, SPP or SPI, whatever you want to call it, is going to be on a 100-point scale. Now, this law apparently is going to align teacher performance less with test scores and more with classroom observations, promotion rates, attendance, and student performance building wide, building wide. If I was a teacher at the high school, I would be very nervous right now about a building-wide evaluation comprising a part of my personal evaluation. If you look in your minutes on page three of seven under section one, these are the scores that they gave us. And...
Ms. Feig, would you, would you make your conclusion? What is your conclusion? If we're performing poorly, go ahead to make your conclusion.
Actually, I wasn't prepared to say anything, but after seeing this, I have a few comments. And I'll finish it for Ms. Feig, because I think I know where she's heading. The scores in this book that you gave us are atrocious for high school. So in all the accolades, and believe me, I am tickled to death for Mr. Lee and for Mr. Mash at the middle school. I think that's fantastic. Somewhere along the line, we're failing. Because once these kids that are excellent, they're getting B pluses overall in these, in these categories, what's happening at the high school level that we are in the gutter with our scores? Yet nobody here on this board seems to care anything about that. We hear about the good things, but nobody's bringing up any of this bad stuff that's going on. If you're going to accept your awards, which obviously they're well deserved, because even this report that Dr. Feig was citing says we're a B+ in the middle school, we're a B+ in the elementary school, we're a D+ in the high school, and that's reflected in our scores. I think this board needs to wake up. Thank you.
And Mr. All, just a real quick comment there. Dr. Feig, what year are we talking about here?
It says 2013.
The data can't be from 2013.
No.
I'm just telling you what it says, okay?
You guys go ahead and make up your...
I'll set up a new website and correct it.
Well, the question, the reason I ask that is because we have realized that we were not happy with the way our high school students were performing. And if you had been in attendance, which I think you were at several meetings when Mr. Proffcheck spoke about some of the programs and some of the initiatives that he's put into place to correct this situation, we're well aware of our reality. We're confronting our reality. We're trying to deal with that reality. And that has been addressed, added tonight in the board meeting by Dr. Proffcheck, by Dr. Spott.
According to those scores, the school...
Thank you for your presentation. We had all the three things. We're not denying it. We know it.
What's being done about it, Josie? The last time I was at a, the last time I sat on a scoreboard...
I'm so sick of negativity, negativity from you. I'm so sick of it.
Well, quit hiding in the sand, Josie.
You all, I knew you were going to do it. I just knew.
Listen, Josie, six years ago, this board, six years ago, I was on the board when the middle school scores were terrible. And everybody that was on that board was so up in arms, they didn't bury their head. They were ready to discipline and fire people and the administration and the teachers to get this stuff back. And here, all you do is bring up flyers that say we're doing wonderful. We're putting in a good product in the beginning, and in the end, our kids are coming out with very little education. And you're, you're denying it. What is this paperwork that we look at? How can you deny that we're not doing well? Two years we've been in a warning status, and it doesn't look any better.
There's a plan in place.
It's getting already, it's getting worse, Josie. It's getting worse.
Just keep saying that. Just keep saying that, Josie.
Josie, look at the scores.
No wonder these, never mind.
And I never saw anybody that ran on parade like you two. Nothing like you.
And you know what? All you've said the whole four years you've been on this board is good work, good work, good work.
That's why.
Yeah, well, what about the... Yeah, well, what about the bad work that's being done in the high school? What are you gonna do about, oh, yeah, oh, and if we wouldn't have brought up, no one in this city community would know what's going on. Uh, you know what, Gil? You have no concept of why you're even on the school board.
What do we owe these kids? Don't we owe these kids an education that they can go out and be proud of?
They are, yes.
Really?
If I brought the scores home that some of these kids are bringing home, my dad would have whipped me and I wouldn't have had the butt.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, what scores are those?
The ones that reflect that we have a D-plus in the high schools? And you're about, you're, you're saying that's okay? That we're working on that?
Did I say that was okay?
No, no, but what are you asking? My scores?
I may question the source.
Of what?
Tell me about your source.
Ignore the source. Ignore the source. Go to page three of seven. Go to page three, seven, eight minutes.
Why don't you tell me when the most current high school scores are? Why don't you, I'll throw it back to your court. Maybe I'm wrong. Show me in writing where we have made major improvements and I will go away.
We have.
Okay, show me those.
You may have to...
Go away? Okay.
But what is PNCAN as well?
I have no idea. Uh, that was the first I saw.
They're holding it up, saying this is the day.
Have a motion on the, uh, table here.
Mr. Scott, Dr. Scott.
Throw mine away. Use yours. They're worse.
Is there a second?
If you're going to accept one part of it, then you have to accept the other part of it.
Second, uh, Miss Love. Just one minute. Uh, Mr. Scott, uh, did you wanna say something else, Dr. Scott?
I just, I just think it's very illustrative on the night that we're recognizing the National Blue Ribbon School.
Oh, yes, it's a big conspiracy, Gil. It's a big conspiracy.
They have all the information already. Obviously, it was prepared.
Excuse me.
Plan.
If that's the way, if that's... If that is...
Just one minute, Josie. Yeah, Dr. Scott has the floor.
I'll be quick.
She just knew it.
If that's the way you offer congratulations, I'll say...
She didn't clap one time.
No, no, thank you.
He didn't.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. When they start coming out of high school with those degrees that are much better.
Much improved, Mr. Mull.
Okay, well, I, 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 I don't have a problem eating my words when it comes to education. If the kids are coming out better, I just do well, but doing better.
We have a motion and a second here on the board, but, uh, Mr. Benz wants in here, so let's listen to Mr. Benz.
Question on the motion, um, we need to, uh, recess to personnel, I believe.
Or adjourn to personnel.
Adjourn to personnel. That's, that, that, was that the motion and second here? Okay.
Very... Can I just bring out, out one thing? I know a little bit, just a little bit about this, this document, PNCAN. PNCAN is a, a political organization out of Philadelphia, an activist group that was, uh, formed to point, to really complain about a broken educational system, which is the Philadelphia Public Schools. More recently, PNCAN, in their activism, is getting more involved in the, in our other urban areas of the state. But you can go to their website. They solicit donations from you. Uh, and again, you know, the, the United States Department of Education, whether we, we support our government or not, uh, says one thing. The National Association of Secondary School Principals, uh, are a pretty well-regarded educational group for many, many, for the last hundred years. Says one thing about our schools and, and, and an activist group out of Philadelphia that was formed for the sole purpose of, of drawing attention to the Philadelphia Public Schools issues a report card. And I, I said, "Let's just be more complete in our data." Dr. Fike, you do a wonderful job of, of scouring every source possible to find the only negative thing that you can to talk about this district.
Mr. Patonic did demographics.
And completely ignore this whole presentation about the, the National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence. You sat there and, 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 and almost looked ill.
Mr. Patonic did demographics and he said, and I'll quote, "One of the things that bothers me is the bachelor degree level that's signed, the college graduate level in our school district is eleven percent." Okay, that's in the demographics.
Now we're bringing the solicitor into the discussion.
The state is twenty-six percent, nationally is twenty-five, and, uh, we have eleven percent to graduate from college in this district. Does that not bother you?
That's not reflective of our graduates. That's reflective of our residents. Many of our graduates, they've moved.
Let me just say something here in reflecting a little bit here on this. Uh, we've had this debate for about four years that I've been around this table. Uh, and I'm saying this to the public. The public has been following this. And the public also looks at these numbers. It looks at these awards. It looks at the, uh, it, and, and the public is not stupid. They are able to read things too. And in the last election cycle in May, I stood out there and some of us ran on this being a strong school district. We ran on a positive school district and we're still standing. Believe me, I have a great deal of, of, of confidence in this community that it will support, that it looks wide-eyed and open and rational at what's going on in our schools and asks hard questions and also is strongly behind, a majority is strongly behind the direction that is being set here. And I, I, I'm totally wanting to be in the middle of that. That's all I have to say.
And I have no doubt, no doubt, that the high school will be the next.
All in favor of adjourned to executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And we are adjourned.